All right, good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of Townscheper Langley Council to order. And the first thing I'd like to do is to welcome the nursing students from Quantlin Polytechnic University and Connie Klimickler, their instructor. Connie, big wave. Thank you. Thank you for coming. And I understand that Counselor Kunst and Counselor Whitmarsh spoke to your class last week regarding municipal government, and you still came. Excellent. But welcome here. Thank you. Okay, first item is the, is a motion to adopt or receive the agenda items.
To move.
Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Ferguson. All those in favor, opposed and carries. Thank you. And next item is adoption of minutes, regular evening council meeting February 10th and the public hearing meeting in February 10th.
To move.
Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Arnison. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you. There are no presentations. We have one delegation, Mr. Joe Sindrich. And if Mr. Sindrich can come forward. You have five minutes to present. If you just provide your name and where you live before you start, and I'll start the timer. You'll see the light go to solid red, you know your time is up. Thanks.
Joe Sindrich, I live at 4665-233rd Street, Langley. I'd like to talk to or ask questions about taxation, property taxation, basically residential, not commercial, not farm. I know how the tax system works, the assessment, mill rate, et cetera, et cetera, and money's raised to meet the budget. My questions I have are on residential property, single-family homes. And I know that each home is assessed according to value, mill rate, et cetera. But what happens if there is multifamilies living in that home? I also know that my taxes go to pay for policing, for road work, for school taxes, hospital, garbage collection, road maintenance, civil center, recreation center, parks, snow removal, municipal services, street lighting, metro water, metro sewer, and on and on and on. That's where my taxes go. Now, if people choose to live in one residence and have multifamilies, that is their choice, and that is their lifestyle. But are they paying their fair share of taxes? I believe not. And they also, of the three residents and people that I know very well, say they don't. They pay one tax, where I pay, my wife and I pay our tax, two of my children and their families pay tax in Langley, one of my children live in Surrey and pay tax. And that all goes towards the services that we enjoy. I believe that multifamilies living in a single-family dwelling don't pay their fair share of taxes. And I would like to know what you folks are going to do about that. How are you going to collect these taxes? I pay for school taxes, I have no children going to school. I pay for recreational services that I don't use. Everybody should pay their fair share. What about the residents up on 136 and 46? Over 10 different families living in there? 136 and 46.
Sorry.
Look at the license plates. You'll find out that they're not common names or common families. Does that mean that I can move six or seven families on my property? According to ancestry, I have 1,500 blood relatives in the area. I guess they're all entitled to live there. What is going to happen about the taxation on the property at Robson Crescent and 140, or 240th? I may have made a mistake and said 136.
Yeah.
236. Drive by and look at 240th and Robson Crescent. I was told by one of the contractors that two of the gradges are already serviced. I guess the cars need a stove and a toilet. I don't know. Please tell me how you are going to collect equitable taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to, and if you want, you could just send an email with those questions, and I'll make sure staff respond on how the taxation system works in the Townscheper Langley and the province of British Columbia when it comes to assessment of property values. So now we'll move on to bylaws, first and second reading. And F1 is rezoning application number 100480 and development permit application number 120897. This is bylaw number 5562 and 5563. Could I have a motion, please, on F1? Moved by Counselor Arnison, and seconded is Counselor Kunst. Counselor Richter.
Yes. So on page five of the report, there's a diagram there that shows a very significant tree area on this property, and it runs from the northern boundary to the southern boundary of the property. I was on council when that particular area was identified as a significant tree area, and the planner of the day wanted to make sure that it was conserved in the future for wildlife corridors and also for tree retention. Now, on page nine, this history is referenced with the fact that in 2017, an application came forward that basically wanted to clearcut the property, and council of the day at that point referred it back to staff to look at maintaining those significant trees. Now, we have this application in front of us that essentially is going to be eliminating half of those significant trees. 132 of them, with only one proposed for retention in the bottom half of the property. And I don't know why we would allow something like this to happen when we know that that stand of trees has a significant history and value in the township. It should all be maintained. And then on page 13, there is a quote that "the provision of stormwater management and sediment control measures in compliance with the Township and Development Servicing bylaw satisfies the objectives of the Sustainability Charter." I'm not sure how removing these trees from a significant tree area satisfies any objectives of the Sustainability Charter. So I can't support this. I'm very disappointed, and I would urge council to consider sending this back once again to make sure that that entire stand of significant trees is saved.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on H1. Oh, sorry, on F1. And carries with Counselor Richter and Counselor Davis opposed. We move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading. H1 is rezoning application number 100573, development permit application numbers 101094 and 101095, bylaw number 5550, Janda Group Holdings Incorporated. Could I have a motion, please?
Uh-huh.
Counselor Woodward, move, second by Counselor Ferguson. And discussion on H1. Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I don't have any discussion, Mr. Mayor, but I do have that amendment, so I would move that when you're ready for that.
Go ahead.
If there's, okay, so I'll go ahead and move that amendment.
Perhaps, perhaps you could read it because it's...
Actually, I supplied it to Ms. Bauer, if that's all right, to place it on screen, and I distributed it on table to, to council. So I just moved that.
Just wanted to make sure that the public know what the amendment is.
So provided that on table to council, and I'll move that amendment now.
Okay, thank you. Oh, there it is. Okay, good. So did you wish to speak to it?
No, I will not. Unless there's any questions, I'll save my two chances to speak. Thank you.
Has it been moved in second?
It's been moved in second.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Kunst, yeah, Counselor Ferguson seconded it. Counselor Kunst.
So I noticed here the number four. The capital contribution be funded by initial internal borrowing from the water and/or sewer utilities with an applicable municipal finance authority-based interest rate applied. Could you explain?
Okay.
I'll refer to Mr. Backen. Okay.
I think the questions should go to staff.
Okay, sorry.
And then, yeah, thank you. And then I'm going to ask, because I didn't open Amendment One, so I'm going to clear this speaker's list. I'm going to open Amendment One. Counselor Kunst, push your button first so I can get you on. And then there are two other speakers. If you just push your buttons again, that way I keep track of the speaker's list. And there was another speaker, if I recall. Okay, Counselor, Mr. Backen.
Worship, we have to slow down just a little bit because I think what this is, is really additional conditions prior to council willing to actually give the matter final adoption. So I'm not sure it's actually an amendment as much as it is a companion or concurrent motion. As you may recall, at first and second reading, we actually had a series of conditions. Of course, at that time, there was no way to actually consider all of the angles that were before council, so this seems to be an additional condition, which makes perfect sense. But as such, it's not properly an amendment, it's actually a concurrent motion.
Okay.
The way to handle it would be simply then to table the main motion for the moment, dispense of this, pass it as an independent motion, or deal with it, it may not be passed, and then come back to deal with the tabled motion so we know what the outcome would be. If you'd like, we can pause, and then we can go through Counselor Kunst's questions, or I can deal with those now.
Okay, so, sure, perhaps we can unwind this and just...
Yeah, so Mr. Backen, just the intent around that, I think that the conditions that are in the third reading, that if this is not adopted, that we would have to talk about, we can't really pass third with the proposal as it stands without understanding some of these elements are accepted by council. So I think the tabling is the correct procedure, Mr. Mayor, and I'll undo or change it to that based on Mr. Backen's direction.
Thank you. So, so Mr. Backen, tabling the main motion?
Correct.
And then dealing with this as a separate motion?
Correct, it's already been moved.
That's right. Both have been moved and seconded, so...
So you would simply table the first motion, the bylaw for third reading, to dispose of this.
Okay, so it's moved. Is there a second to the tabling? Counselor Woodward. Just a show of hands, all those in favor of tabling, opposed, carries unanimously. So now we're, so now this is a standalone motion, then?
Standalone and current. So I believe Counselor Kunst's question really was aimed to the financial implications of paragraphs three and four. I think that's what it was, if I understood it correctly.
Yeah, so particularly on number four, but yeah, probably ties in with number three.
So the, as we had some chance to review this, Director Sinclair can comment further if needed. We have established that in the independent utilities, there is sufficient funding to cover the construction obligations, or if you will, to make a loan that would be fully repayable to the utilities within a certain defined period of time, provided that did carry a base level of interest. The language has been carefully chosen to not allocate between the utilities at this point, but to simply have it coming jointly from the utilities, and we can allocate it as will best meet the ongoing needs of the township for those funding sources. The second part of this is that the funds would be repaid, firstly at least, from the Alder Grove Community Amenity Fund. So there would be, each year, there'd be a significant amount going in, and we would be anticipating that this would be perhaps a five-to-seven-year amortization, not the traditional 20- or 30-year amortization. Combined with that, clause three then deals with the, the very preliminary and hopefully generous estimate to maintain the facility as it goes forward, but that's based on limited information to date.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions through your worship to staff. It talks in, on this motion that mentions number three, that the Township of Langley be prepared to own, operate, and maintain the facility upon completion, annual cost estimated 294 and 141K per year. Do we have any, any sense, and maybe it's just too early, to have an understanding of what the anticipated revenue might be on an annual basis from a parquet like this?
The, the cost base is based on an average of per-unit stall in terms of what we experienced with other jurisdictions or some limited experience we've had with such structures. The revenue, though, is very dependent upon what council's direction would be. At this point, we don't have any anticipated direction as to a user-pay model. That's something council would have to advise us on. If there was to be a user-pay model, it would be a multiple of the number of hours times the hourly rate times the number of visits per year. At this point, though, we don't anticipate or understand it to be a user-pay model.
Okay, so, but it's, this, this motion would allow that to, to possibly occur, a user-pay based on number two in here, in which the discussion for council to approve a parking, parking management system.
That's correct. Council would have the option because the, the resolution anticipates not only maintaining, but also own and operation. So this would actually be, in all likelihood, the creation of an airspace parcel or multiple airspace parcels within the structure that could then further be subdivided by way of a strata plan. In this case, that would be important for the other units, but for this area where the parking is, we would anticipate that to be one airspace parcel so that we would effectively own title and therefore could, I guess, stipulate the conditions of use that could include the user-pay model.
Right, okay, that's, that's helpful. On number five, it talks about funds from the Alder Grove Community Amenity Funds being available. Do we have a, a sense of what is anticipated on that? That 20% of CACs are being directed towards Alder Grove revitalization. So do we have an idea of what that might be on an annual basis coming in for Alder Grove?
Again, it's very preliminary because we've only had a partial year. I believe for last year, we recorded about a million-two, maybe slightly more than that as the gross number, so 20% of that would then be attributable, or approximately $200,000. One could assume, based on the portion of the year, that that would give an accurate number, but generally, it depends on the ebbs and flows of the development process. So at this point, all we can do is report the historical numbers and indicate that we anticipate the numbers I've suggested will grow in future.
Right, so we, we could use that money for Alder Grove in whatever way we felt best, and so one could be to pay this down as quickly as possible, for example?
Effectively correct. Subject to making sure that the amenity fund is used for those categories of uses that are described within the fund. This is a use that's described within the fund. Your question was, could we do something perhaps outside that prescribed use? The short answer is we could, but it would require an amendment to the documents that created the fund.
Right, okay, that's good for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, to say, it's, the amendment, we've just gone over it, and we've had discussions with the proponent. I, I think it's important to, to note that we look at a funding mechanism for paying for the, the parking component and also contingency accordingly. I, I think it's important also find, you know, the, the correct interest rates and municipal finance authority, of course. And the last thing is, this is complying, I know we're not discussing with the bylaw, but this complies with the, the section, I guess it's a 10-story building, although we're not talking the bylaw, if I may, regarding the proposal through the staff? The parquet and the 10-story building, phase one, I think?
Your worship, not sure if we quite understand. The proposal, I think, calls for the 10-story structure with this being four stories within that structure. It'll be council's decision, I suppose, ultimately, if that structure is consistent with the Alder Grove Core Plan and our other documents. Mr. Seffy, did you have any further thoughts?
That, that actually answers that, because it's important that we had to find the funding mechanism for this particular part and component of the, the actual bylaw and the application made by the Janda Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Thank you. I, Counselor Whitmarsh got an answer to number five. Five to seven years at 20% CACs, but that doesn't seem, the math doesn't seem to add up at 20%. I guess that's a question. Or do I not understand that?
Maybe some more explanation from Mr. Backen would be helpful. Thanks.
The reference to the number of years was a hypothetical based on, I guess, our hopes. To answer your question, if we're going to repay $8 million, we'll say in eight years, that's a million dollars a year in principle, that would mean that the million would have to represent 20%. So we'd be looking at a total CACs of about $5 million to be collected, of which then 20% would be 1 million. That would be the, I guess, the hope. We would probably structure an amortization period to be a little bit longer because that would put a significant strain on the, the fund. However, we would provide some provisions in it that it would mean that we would be able to, if there was a surplus, we could pay it down early. So if you will, it'd be like a early repayment without any penalty, is what we would be providing for. Because our key is to make sure we draw down the, or to pay the interest on the principal balance to repatriate it to the funds, being the water and sewer utility that are independent and have, in fact, loaned that money to this project.
Okay. The other question is on number four. The capital contribution is funded by initial internal borrowing from the water and sewer utilities. Will that show up on our budget? Previous budgets, with the applicable municipal finance authority-based rate applied, eliminating the approximate 2.5. How long would that internal borrowing from the water and sewer, and that's, that's basically linked with number five, that's where the money's going to come back? So if you, if we have to extend it further, I'm just, like, have you got an idea how long that might be? I guess we just talked about that, didn't we?
Realistically, I suppose, we would hope to do it in the five-to-seven-year period, but as indicated, that's a significant CAC contribution being claimed. Probably, in all likelihood, between eight and 12 years, maybe around 10 is going to be the, probably a realistic number if growth patterns continue. If growth patterns don't continue as they are, then that might slow things down, but we would structure the loan accommodation, again, an internal accommodation, such that it would have some flexibility to it, allowing for early repayment, but probably a amortization period that's longer than we hoped is needed.
Okay. The other thing is revenue, the revenue of 94 to 141 per year, that, does that go into? We have so many funds, but what fund would that go into?
No, no, that's not revenue, that's actually expenses to maintain. And so when you look at a structure, you're looking at an average cost of, say, between $500 and $750 per stall to maintain it on a yearly basis. So that references what our costs would be. The previous questions, I think we're focusing on the second, the second paragraph that allows council at a later date to consider revenue opportunities. Now, that could be short-term pay, hourly rentals, longer leases, or maybe to have it simply as a community amenity with no cost at all. That, that analysis or discussion hasn't yet occurred.
Okay, I, I put the wrong word down here. It wasn't revenue, it was the cost of, per year. Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Long.
Thanks, your worship. I think the word revenue came up somewhere here, and that has me quite concerned because if we're going to have a successful shared parking facility, the last thing you want to do is start charging people for it. And as it says here in the last paragraph, which is not on the screen, but we need to come back with a cash-in-lu system. So in other words, those that may be developing along Fraser Highway, they want to take advantage of this because there isn't room on their lots to, to provide parking, certainly won't be wanting to charge their customers potentially to, to shop there. So I, I just want to make sure that this, there isn't built into this number three an inherent need to be charging for parking at this stage. I think the flexibility is given to us in number two, because it's, you know, it gives us the final approval and so forth. But I mean, I think Mr. Backen, through your worship, is saying that there isn't implied in here that there's going to need to be a revenue generated from charging for parking, because that's going to really go against exactly what we're trying to do, isn't it? To encourage people to park there?
Backen.
Your worship, the numbers are not net numbers, they're actually the anticipated gross numbers, if you will. There's been no revenue offsets calculated into those numbers. The ability for there to be revenue is something within the jurisdiction of council that they could decide at a later date, if that's the path to go down. We're not taking any position on that. At this time, we're simply indicating that it's council's prerogative.
Thank you, and I'm glad that that's been stressed because I don't think there would be any need for us to put, to, you know, impose that at this stage. I guess the real question, too, in number four, is just how much money is there in the water and sewer utilities? Because I guess we don't want to be taking any chances that we're going to short-change those utilities, so I imagine there must be an awful lot of flexibility there. So maybe we can get a sense of what the balance is in those funds at the moment?
The calculations that were done actually took into account the current forecastable projects, and then took those off the total balances to leave, I think, the numbers available for this accommodation, and then a bit of a safety net. Now, Karen, are you, do you recall what the numbers actually were?
It was about 12 million in water and four in sewer.
So it's tight, but I mean, and I guess the mystery is, is what will happen in the future if, if development is going strong and monies are being put into the, into this special community amenity fund will be, will be fine. But I mean, there's a risk involved, too, if, if things take a downturn of some kind. I guess my, my concern might have come a long time ago when this CAC special fund was set up, but now that we can't turn the clock back on that, council has agreed to that, and we're moving forward with it. So now we have an amenity fund that is propped up a little bit, especially for Alder Grove, so this is a good way to spend it, I suppose. I'll be supporting it because I think we get in a position right now where we need to move on.
Thank you.
Move on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yes, two questions of clarification. Counselor Long just referenced the cash-in-lu system, and I just want to be sure that we're not leaving any false impressions out there that if you're going to develop property on Fraser Highway and you don't have enough parking on your own site, we're going to give you parking free in that building. So I'm wondering if I could get a clarification of what is intended by that phrase.
Backen.
Your worship, the, the last paragraph is referencing that council does have the jurisdiction to develop a structure, we'll call it a latecomers' structure, if you will, to charge the development on the corridor or in the core for a proportionate share of this facility. Again, no framework has yet been developed, but we do have the, the basic of such a framework by having the Alder Grove Core Plan that can actually delineate the limits of it, and then from that, we can determine the appropriate method to, as I say, levy a charge or fee against developing areas within that plan. What that would look like, it's premature, is this is, is being presented to council, you know, at the present time, without the benefit of a detailed analysis of the various systems or what that revenue could look like.
Okay, well, and that's fair, that if somebody's going to develop in the future, they have the option to come in under a latecomers' agreement. That's fair. The second question I had, it pertains to paragraph number two and the topic of features there, and I'm wanting to make sure that features include the facade of the building because there are some parking structures that are quite ugly to look at, and there are other parking structures that are very pleasant and well-blended into the surrounding neighborhood to look at. So is the intent of putting features in there to cover the facade?
Effectively, that's a part of it. This area would fall under a form and character provision, and as such, council would have the ultimate ability to, to, I guess, look at it as if it were a development permit. I use that as the analogy to it. Council could, through that process, direct several things, and in fact, could go further because effectively, this is going to be a parcel, an airspace parcel, that we'd end up owning, so we could go well beyond form and character if we so chose, but it's intended to give council that level of control.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I appreciate those, those questions and those comments from council. I won't, you know, I think we've, we've had the discussion a little bit at first and second, and some of the other discussions between counselors regarding the merits of the shared parking facility, the fact that it's in the Alder Grove Core Plan, so I don't need to repeat a lot of those arguments. But I, I did want to highlight, Ms. Bauer, if you could scroll it up to the top for So that was the important one, was the first one, that, that, you know, at a high level, council's endorsing what's already in the Alder Grove Core Plan with a unique, pretty good, solid opportunity with a proponent that's willing to incorporate this into their development at no land cost to the Township of Langley. So if in 10 or 15 years, we'd want to come back and try to address this later on as part of the Core Plan, we would have to acquire property and build a structure on it, whereas instead, it's being incorporated into this today, presumably if it's approved, in a mixed-use development, right in the best spot, you know, deep on the inside of the site, not consuming sidewalk frontage, at no, again, no land cost to the Township of Langley. So, and we take ownership of this and can use it to help the revitalization of other development parcels in the downtown area. So one example of, of this is, of course, sorry, before I get to the example, that the first part is that we're endorsing the concept, and then over time, we have a couple of years here before it's delivered to us to get the policies right, get some feedback from the development industry, and, and see what the potential can be. So Ms. Bauer, if you'd, again, scroll down to the, to the bottom for me. So the last paragraph there is to put on the table the concept of a cash-in-lu system, and I did a little bit of research on this, and as it turns out, the City of Surrey is currently contemplating something very similar for their downtown, and they're currently working on a cash-in-lu system to help people use shared parking in a shared capacity so we're not all duplicating, not all developments are duplicating all the parking on their site. And there's a number of efficiencies, provocation, better urban form, and other benefits to this that we can continue to work on here once we get past the idea that we are going to move forward with this portion of the Alder Grove Core Plan. And for example, in Surrey, they're working on a cash-in-lu system that's not a latecomers' so it doesn't expire. Payment of $20,000 is paid to the city for each parking stall for the use by the city in accordance with Off-Street Parking Reserve Fund bylaw and Alternative Transportation Infrastructure Reserve Fund bylaw, something that the City of Surrey is currently working on right now for some of their, so this, this, there are the municipalities that are heading in this direction, which, again... which again points to, uh, some of the great work that was done by some of the people here, even Counselor Long and others, Counselor Fox, I believe, was part of it, and even the Janet Group themselves were part of it, part of the Alder Grove Core Plan, and moving forward with it. And really a visionary document in deciding what is Alder Grove going to look like in, you know, fifteen years or twenty years, and what do we need to put in place now to, to get where we want to see Alder Grove be in that timeframe? And not plan for Alder Grove for next week or next month, but for ten or fifteen years from now. And I believe that this proposal, uh, in terms of this shared parking facility, is a big, big part of achieving, I think, what everybody's goals are for downtown Alder Grove. And the last item in this, uh, particular motion heads in the direction of working with our staff and working potentially with some consultants to come up with a program, to, to see what a cash-in-lose system would work with, knowing that we have that parking capacity to work with in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, I have a question for, um, for staff regarding, um, and, and, um, point number four. Uh, the, uh, interest rate, um, to be, you know, applied to this loan, do we generally charge interest rate when we borrow internally? Uh, because the, this is not new, where the township, uh, requires funds for a project, and it borrows internally and then repays it. Um, but I don't recall us charging interest rate within our own, um, departments.
Uh, Your Worship, it depends upon the fund being utilized, some of our funds are, are non-restricted, they're really just part of our general revenue category, so council has the discretion to charge interest or not charge interest. When we're dealing with these separate funds, uh, which are going to be the water utilities or some of the DCC funds, we're obliged in those circumstances then to charge interest at market rates, and in this case, uh, the reference is to the MFA rate, which is in the two-point-four to two-point-five percent range.
Uh, so I can understand that. Um, however, when we have, um, reserves, uh, building up, that they're invested in, in various, various forms, is this the investment return, or is this the rate that would be that we would pay if we borrowed it? Because I would think we'd be, we'd be, uh, covering the investment return, not treating it as a bank and then paying a higher rate. Uh, so this way, it allows it to be paid down sooner.
No, that's correct, this is the higher end of the investment return rate, not the, the borrowing rate necessarily. So this is what can be generated if all goes well, and it's based on historical numbers, not our, not our interpretation of future numbers.
Okay, so with this, uh, point number four, should it be clarified that, that the return be, uh, based on, and that, like, the MFA investment return rate, because they, they do invest funds on behalf of municipalities? Or are we going to be paying as if it's a loan internally, and I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, we want to make sure that the fund that is already there is not compromised, that it maintains the rate of investment that it would get normally, but we don't want to be charging one side, you know, the left hand to pay more to the right hand, and, you know, it's, it's all within.
That's, that's correct, Your Worship, the reference to the applicable MFA-based interest rate is the investment rate, that's the intention. If you'd like to clarify it, it certainly could be done, but the, the number references the investment rate.
Okay, that's fair enough for me, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. And I see no further discussion on this motion, uh, so I'll call a question. This is just on this motion that's in front of us, not on the third reading. Okay, it carries unanimously. So now, now we're back, so moved to raise, raise, raised from the table, moved and seconded. Uh, I'll, just show of hands, all those in favor, opposed, carried, okay, so third reading is back on the table. Uh, so if we could have, if anybody would wish to speak to third reading? Seeing none, oh, here we go, uh, it all lights up like a Christmas tree. Counselor Davis.
Okay, thank you very much, um, this motion, um, made it a little more paddleable. I, um, I've got a few points here on third reading. I believe in ten years, we may look back at Alder Grove and see the value added to Alder Grove. It's in our OCP for density in the downtown core. Uh, the proponent has, um, measures in the plan to, uh, clean up Bertrand Creek. This is in our sustainable vision and goals that we set, we set out to. And I believe the proponent has developed a parcade that would benefit the rest of the Alder Grove downtown core, and not just his development, so I think that that's, uh, something that, um, I see a benefit. And, uh, I'd like to, I think I'm going to, uh, support this, because I think that if the township, as a township, if we don't support this, um, I see in, like, we made a BIA, uh, in Al, in Fort Langley, uh, quite a number of years ago, and it has, it, it is, it pays, it, it will give dividends to the community and to the township, and it, it may have took in ten, fifteen years. Uh, um, Murrayville has a downtown, a BIA, and it is, once you get it started, and I think that as it, as a township, as a council, I think we need to buy into this, and, uh, we need to support this, so that Alder Grove, um, which I like the way it is, but in the future, I think that we have to support it, and, and if we support it, it will be a domino effect, and, uh, Alder Grove will be a sustainable community in the future, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Richter.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to express appreciation to all the people who came out and spoke at the public hearing last week, and, um, spoke, uh, very much from their hearts about this, uh, this particular application. Uh, I know there was a former member of this council who was there, and, uh, his comments, uh, really convinced me to vote the way I'm going to vote on this. We've been talking now for twenty years, as long as I've been sitting at this table, about how we can help Alder Grove move forward. Now we finally have a concrete plan to see this come to fruition. So I am going to support this application, and I'm very happy to do so.
Thank you, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you, um, this, uh, this plan overall, I, I really like. Um, I, I like a lot of the things that are happening in the plan, and, um, and I think it's, it's going to be a great, uh, walkable community. I think the parcade is a, is a, is going to be helpful, um, for the growth of, of Alder Grove. Um, but my, I have a, I have a question, um, around, and, and some thoughts just around cycling. And I wanted to, through your worship, maybe ask staff some questions with regards to cycling. And, uh, currently, currently, the, the plan is to have, um, the, the main road go, the Alder, Alder Grove Town Centre Drive go through, uh, the centre. There is, uh, cycling, uh, lanes that are, are provided. Um, but I, I was interested in looking at how we could, um, adjust the plan, uh, slightly uh, in order to include protected cycling lanes. Um, when I look at the, uh, diagram, um, on page eleven, uh, that I have in my, in the package, the, the cycling lanes are, are painted, so they are a different color to, uh, help people become aware of, of cyclists and so on. But, um, seeing some examples of what's been done in other communities, particularly around business communities in Burnaby and other areas, having protected cycling lanes, um, I think are a significant advantage. And while, while, um, I recognize that it's not required that we do so, um, in this area, that we do have a policy maybe more around arterial roads, I do, I do think there's a, a, a great opportunity for us to look at what we could do that would be really unique and special in this area for cyclists. And, um, you know, walkability includes cycling, uh, because people do cycle as part of that. And, and when I think of walkability, also includes cyclability, and, and that's important. And, and so I think there is some ways to do it, and so I guess my question, one of my questions through, through, uh, your worship to staff was around parking that is currently available on Alder Grove Town Centre Drive as the plan is. I understand there's parking on both sides of the road, which makes it maybe a little bit more difficult, uh, to provide, uh, protected parking. But I'm wondering if, um, there would be an answer on what is the amount of parking that is currently, would be available on street parking on Alder Grove Town Centre Drive?
Mr. Seffi.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I guess, uh, before I responded to the question, uh, I, I suggest that the, uh, arrangement for cyclists is currently actually protected, so I would, uh, phrase the, uh, the proposal to something other than protected by suggesting perhaps a physical, uh, barrier or a physical separation might be a better way, because, uh, I don't want the public to, uh, get the impression that it's not currently being protected. It is protected by, by other means than, than physical barriers. So, uh, having said that, in response to the question being, being raised by Counselor Whitmarsh, I can confirm that there are approximately thirty-six ultimate, uh, parking stalls being provided or, or, uh, relied upon on street, uh, overall, uh, with approximately twenty-two being, uh, part of the, the current phase, and remaining fourteen or fifteen, uh, or thirteen, uh, approximately, being part of the future, uh, on-street parking provided for as part of future phases when the, the rest of the road is, is completed, uh, towards the eastern edge.
Okay, so current, currently, the way that I understand it is that, um, the, there, if we start from, say, a building moving outward, we start, we'll have a sidewalk, and then, um, up to the, uh, uh, on the edge of the sidewalk would be, uh, parking, I think I've got that right, parking, street parking, um, and then inside the street parking, as we move to the centre of the road, would be the painted green, uh, bike path, and then we'd move into the lane of, for vehicles, is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, okay, so the, 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 the challenge, I guess, is that, is that having the, uh, parking, or the, yeah, the parking for vehicles on, um, right against the walking pathway, and then the bike path in between the parking cars and the driving cars is what is, makes it difficult to have this protected parking, or sorry, protected cycling lane as in, uh, some kind of, uh, small physical barrier. Is that correct, that's the sort of challenge with it?
Uh, Your Worship, I'm not sure I understand the question, uh, but I guess I will, I will state, uh, the current design as follows. As Counselor Whitmarsh correctly pointed out, the current design anticipates a sidewalk, uh, first of all, uh, adjacent to the property line. Then, uh, you have the curb and gutter, adjacent to the curb and gutter, you have the, the parking, the on-street parking in some spots. So it's not, it's not for the entirety of the length of, of the, uh, the Alder Grove Town Centre Drive that parking can be accommodated. So in sections where parking can be accommodated, it is adjacent to the curb line, the, the curb and gutter. Then adjacent to that is the, the cycling lane, and adjacent to that is the driving lane. Now, the problem with changing that is the impact that it would have on, one, uh, safety, uh, and I guess the, the connectivity or access from, from parked vehicles to sidewalk. And then the second part is the actual number and the, the feasibility of providing on-street parking. So those things have to be, uh, looked at in more detail and, and, and considered as one looks at potential changes to the, the cross-section.
Right, okay. So, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not a, uh, an expert on the different, um, cycling paths that could go through a business area, but I do think that we have an opportunity here to do something unique, and I, and I'm not sure that what we have here in terms of cycling is unique. I, I think it's, uh, we've just, in a sense, painted a, uh, painted a green patch along the, where people drive. And in fact, now, they're going to be riding their bikes in between a parked car and a car that's driving, which seems a little awkward to me. And, uh, so I, I think, you know, again, I'm, I'm very supportive of what's happening with the plan, I think it's wonderful for Alder Grove, but I do think we could do better, uh, with regards to cycling, and I'm not sure if that's, um, reducing the amount of parking on street parking. I'm not sure if it could be a small, uh, raised, uh, line that's painted, that maybe is, uh, you know, a centimeter, so it's a slight little bump when someone drives on it, I don't know if there's some reflectors along there, uh, that could be done. Uh, there is a lot of neat examples that are being done, uh, including in the Vancouver, metro area, metro Vancouver area, of how we can really look at some protected cycling lanes, and, um, I'm not, I mean, I guess it's, depends on the, how we use the words protected, but the lanes as they are now, to me, aren't protected, they're a different color to bring awareness, but they're not protected. And, uh, so, you know, for me, um, I certainly would like to see, uh, some kind of amendment that recognizes the need for protected cycling, and we would allow, uh, architects and designers and so on to think through how they would actually do that, uh, much better than I can. I'll leave that for now.
Yeah, Mr. Seffi, um, just following up on that. So at this point in time, at third reading, is it necessary for an amendment, uh, or is this information enough that, uh, when you go back to the, uh, proponent, when they are fine-tuning their development permit, uh, that something innovative can be included based on this conversation, Mr. Seffi, or do you need an amendment at this point?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, well, it really depends on, on council's desire as to what specifically might be, uh, the aim and the objective. If it is to provide a physical barrier between the cycling lane and the travel lane, then a, a direction would be necessary, Your Worship, because I, I suggest that it will have a, 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 a significant impact uh, on the, the development in terms of the, the loss of parking, because of the, uh, reliance of meeting the requirements of the zoning bylaw with respect to parking on the street. So as discussed earlier, approximately, ultimately, thirty-five or thirty-six parking stalls are being provided on the street. If there is another arrangement, another cross-section that affects that, that impacts the, uh, the number, then that will have a, an impact on the, the overall development, whether it's, uh, uh, to what extent that impact is, I don't know at this point, whether it can be accommodated without any problem or not. I suggest that it may not, and I suggest that it will likely be a, a, a fairly extensive, uh, exercise that might result in, in, uh, a loss of units or a relocation of, of the buildings or readjustment of, of the layout.
Thank you, so just so I can get, uh, be clear, looking at this, this roadway, uh, is, it's similar to what we see at Willoughby Town Centre, because that's not a major thoroughfare with high-speed traffic, it's, uh, traffic goes through there very slowly, and I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thinking this is the same, but I, I may be wrong, is it, is this more of a thoroughfare? Or is it a internal road and a development that's similar to what we see at the Willoughby Town Centre?
That's correct, Your Worship, it is not a, uh, an arterial road. Uh, as discussed or referenced earlier this afternoon, the physical separation between a cycling lane and a, uh, a vehicular lane, uh, is something that our subdivision and development service in Bala does require for arterial roads. This is not an arterial road, so therefore, what is being proposed has been deemed to be, uh, acceptable by, by staff.
Thank you, that's helpful, thank you, Counselor Kuntz.
So, um, initially, the, um, the development, uh, when we went to the, uh, public information, uh, meeting, we saw the pictures, and, uh, there were so many people there, um, I wasn't sure what the, uh, the response would be from the public. And, uh, to be honest, um, the parcade was something that I got really hung up on, and I kind of always thought, you know, you know, parcades are kind of ugly, and, you know, who'd want that in their, in their little community? But since then, I have, um, you know, heard a lot from the people who are, um, really excited about this, uh, development, and why we need a parcade, um, so, you know, I, I will be supporting it. Um, I, I still am a little bit on the fence about the, the financial piece and how we're going to, uh, to make that work, um, because I don't want, um, you know, taxpayers on the hook for, for, um, a parcade, but I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson.
Uh, those of us that, uh, lived in the Alder Grove area and, uh, shopped at the old Alder Grove Mall and, uh, participated in many of the activities that happened there, and, um, enjoyed the, the, um, the facility. Uh, we're sad to see it close for a number of years, and now here we go, resurrection, and, uh, yeah, very positive in the fact that, uh, it's three phases, and the first phase has been presented this evening with, uh, a, a number of, uh, challenges. One of the challenges being the, uh, the parcade, which we had to sit down, and I, I compliment all members of council and staff who are working hard, asking questions, trying to find the funding mechanisms, trying to find other ways to indeed make this happen. So, uh, we're, that's what we're addressing right now, I, I, of course, uh, now. I, of course, sensitive, well, keeping our DCs, ease and reserves up, but as long as we replenish them and find in a, in a timely manner, we're able to do that. Of course, it involves a livable community, a walkable community, as been mentioned, a sustainable community. And this, this council and past councils worked really hard to find recreational facility, the pool, the, the recreation center, the ice arena, the AC, UCC Recreation Center. I don't think I've got the right acronym, but it's the Alder Grove Credit Union. Anyway, it's, it's a great facility right next door. So it's, Alder Grove is, is the future of this community, I see, and I think it's a positive thing. Compliment calls, as, as we mentioned already, and the public participation, both at the public information meeting, and of course, a public hearing, phone calls, emails, and the like. I think it's a positive step in the right direction, and many of us are looking forward to seeing the resurrection of the site again. So I think it's a positive step forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. In a nutshell, I, I just put down, it's Alder Grove's time. I think that this is a wonderful, exciting time, a continuation of all the work that the township has done towards the revitalization of Alder Grove. This is kind of the icing on the cake in a way, so congratulations to the Janda Group for putting this forward. I think that really, for me, what has been most helpful is the community input, the opportunity to listen to those who live in the community. I have lived in Alder Grove, and so I used to live near the site, and so I do have some personal awareness of the issues around the area. And, and that's why, to me, it's so critical that when you bring a plan together, it is the amount of details that you look into to make sure that you are implementing the correct plan. Now, it's true, we had the Alder Grove downtown plan that was put together, and to me, that's a bedrock of why this is a good idea, because that came from community engagement. That came from individuals who had a vested interest and were very passionate to make sure that the downtown core of Alder Grove was not only suitable for current residents, but had a vision for the future. So I think that that is critical. So I'll save, I guess, my accolades till another time, but I just want to echo at this time councillor Whitmarsh's comments regarding the bicycle-protected lanes. It's been my observation that part of the challenge in the township of Langley is that in other areas, we do have bicycle lanes, and the connectivity, I think, is really critical. But to encourage people to drive and ride their bicycles, which is a really wonderful alternative as a transportation mode, it's good not only for a physical exercise, it's also good for the environment and climate change. But I would say, one of the critical criteria for doing that is to ensure that people feel really safe when they're riding their bicycle. And I've been a bicycle rider, not currently, but for many years in Toronto, of all places, where I rode my bicycle year-round. And so I know what that's like, to feel vulnerable when you're driving amongst traffic. And I certainly would say that, for me, one of the things that could be triggered from this is just looking at our overall plan and trying to enhance, if it's going to be a transit hub, then I think it's critical to look at bicycles as part of that potential transit option, and that we need to make places so that people don't feel, there's never a question in the back of their mind, I'd like to take my bicycle today, but, you know, I, I want to make sure that families in particular feel comfortable taking their children there, and that families feel that, if we're making compact communities, this is an ideal way to go about it. We need to have these alternatives, and the only way to do it that makes most sense is to build it in right at the very beginning. So I just want to put a plug in for the, the safe bicycle lanes.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I wanted to, I had a couple of questions, following up councillor Whitmarsh through the staff. Can you bring up the site plan for me? Yeah, that there, previous one, that one there. So what I've noticed here is the, the painted bicycle lanes on the site plan don't seem to be fully green all the way through the development yet. If you go back to the three Ds now, just one of them will be fine. That one there, they seem to be painted completely through the development, but that doesn't seem to match the site plan. So maybe to improve some of that separation, we could ensure that those are painted all the way through as shown in the 3D renderings. Would that be acceptable? You don't need a motion for that, I wouldn't think?
Your worship, just to clarify, the intent is not for the cycling lane to be painted, but rather for the areas where there is an adjacent parking stall, for a strip that we're calling a buffer, buffer strip, to protect the, the cycling from the opening of the doors of parked vehicles to be painted. So that's why it's shown on the, the site plan as, as not being contiguous.
Go back to the, one of the three Ds for me then, please. So that's definitely a little deceiving, looking at it there. They look, because they had, they're showing a cyclist on the green, so I guess it looks a little deceiving there to me, what's actually occurring. But I won't belabor the point any further. I think we all want to see more protection for bike lanes, but I think to do it at this stage for, I think, a development that's done more in this regard than any other I've seen so far, would be a bit, would be a bit of a stretch. I think we should be looking at making this a requirement for all developments going forward to a higher standard, if that's something as a council we want to do, rather than do it at this point for something that I've never seen before otherwise. And I think, I think that that, this is definitely a step forward on an internal site configuration versus the road standard, which is something for us to specify. And I certainly don't want to send it back to delay it any further for that. So the other thing I wanted to add is, obviously, I support the development in regards to the creation of the Alder Grove Community Fund, and, you know, members of council that sincerely consider the, the parking structure from start to finish, its usefulness, its utility for helping downtown Alder Grove, not just next year, but in the decades to come. I really, really appreciate it. The, it was, it was council that created that amenity fund, and it's council that's approving the parcade with the partnership with the development community and coordination with our staff. And I think it's important that everybody see it that way. That's how I see it. And really, really excited here that we may be moving forward with both of these components. Thanks.
Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, I've certainly made lots of comments about cycling, and I do want to make one more. But I, I am supportive of this, and, and will be supporting it to go forward, and I don't want to necessarily see it slowed down. I'm wondering, though, on the cycling, that right now, the way it is, the cycling lane is in between the parked cars and the moving cars. And I'm wondering what would be the difficulty of moving the cycling and switching it over so that cycling was up against the sidewalk where they walk, and it could be designated as a cycling area, and then having parked vehicles and then the driving vehicles. Because currently, the way it is, there's thirty-six stalls there, what will happen is a vehicle will come down, driving, and then they'll want to get into their parking spot. And in order to get into their parking spot, they're going to have to drive across the cycling lane. They'll drive across the cycling lane, right in front or behind a cyclist to pull into the lane. And then, when they want to leave the parking lot, they're going to have to then drive again across the cycling lane to get back out. It just seems kind of awkward. So while it might be a separated lane for cyclists, we have thirty-six parking spots, they're going to have to go back and forth across that bike, that bike lane. So I'm wondering, maybe as a direction, that we would ask the proponent to consider some other options for cycling. I'm not asking for it to be delayed, I'm not asking for an overhaul to the plan. I'm asking to consider some things that might be helpful. If we move that closer to the sidewalk, maybe then a, a slightly raised line against the cycling path and the parked cars, like raised as in maybe half a centimeter, just a little bump, painted line, would be enough to warn drivers not to drive in where the cyclists are. We wouldn't have, we would not have parked cars going back and forth to park or to leave, driving back and forth across the cycling lane, which I think would create quite a bit of danger. And if you're a cyclist, you have to be aware of who's leaving, who's coming, if they're going to pull in front of me, what's going to happen here. So I just think there's some things that could be done without a major overhaul, but could be done, and ask the proponent to make some changes, to come back and have a renewed vision for protection of cyclists within the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Okay, I had a whole bunch of things. I wanted just to say, let's call a vote, but now we're going to talk about cycling so much. You know, really, this is a shared roadway. So cyclists need to be, be aware of vehicles, vehicles need to be aware of cyclists, everybody needs to be aware of pedestrians. This goes right through the town. I think there's going to be speed bumps likely, and all kinds of controls to stop people from speeding. Everybody has to be aware. And I know that the, the cycling people are very, you know, very strong in their opinions, and, and they want to make sure that they make a good effort to convince council that there needs to be special attention given to cyclists. But I think everybody has to be careful when they use this roadway. So I'd hate to see any, any more adjustments. I see more lights on. I was hoping to be the last to speak, but have I used my two times? Maybe.
You're going first.
Oh, well, we, well, I'm not going to, but everybody knows how I want to vote, so let's just get on with it. But anyway, I think you really, in, in all fairness to everyone that's concerned about cycling, this needs to be give and take for everybody that's using that roadway. And I wouldn't think that you'd be going, cars would be going very fast there, and if there's movements happening from vehicles, then cyclist's going to have to stop. But what about buggies and people moving across with all their groceries and so forth, and all of their merchandise that they've been purchasing, and all getting to the pool and back, and moving around? And it's going to be a really cool, open space for everybody to share.
Thank you. Councillor Kuntz?
Yeah, I have still a question about, I think it's on page one hundred and three. It says there's a hundred and ninety-five units, and only six children expected. Do we know how that number gets calculated? And I see that the chair of the school district is here.
So there, I think Mr. Seffy can respond to that a little bit, but there, this is a process that the school district goes through, and generally, we, we accept their numbers, and they've gone back and reviewed those numbers against other developments over time, but they're never one hundred percent accurate. We can't be, but it's certainly their projections, their projections only. And it depends on the type of unit of, and the demographic of people that move into those units. So whether they're small condos and, and won't be that many families in there, but I'm not sure. Mr. Seffy can maybe elaborate a little more.
Thank you, your worship. You actually covered it all pretty, pretty well. What I can say is that recently, I think it was end of last year, maybe November, December timeline, based on a request from, from council, school district did provide confirmation that the way that they do the projection is fairly accurate, based on, on, as the mayor referenced, analysis that has been going on for a number of years, and projections that are done in other jurisdictions, and, and how they are calculated based on the number of units, et cetera, et cetera, going back and looking at the number of, of school-age children coming out of the units has been fairly accurate. And that's been confirmed by a, a recent communication from the school district.
Thank you. And I've got one more speaker, councillor Woodward, but I had a question. Can you go to the, the area plan, or the, the site plan itself? So along the top of it, there's a squiggly yellowish-beige line that goes through. That, I'm assuming, is a pathway? Is that, it's, it's along the top of the?
That's correct, your worship, yes.
And that's a shared pathway for cyclists and, and pedestrians?
Yes, yes, it is, yes.
And that's very safe. So there's some good safe cycling, is what I wanted to point out, some good safe cycling in this plan for cyclists. If they wish just to get from point A to point B, they don't have to go through the busy area. However, I understand of some concerns, going into, use their bikes to do the shopping, or go to services, or they live in there. Obviously, want to make sure that, that it's safe. I'm comfortable with the fact that this is a calmed area already. It's not a, a major, you know, arterial road, that I think there'll be enough safety for cyclists. However, you always have to be careful, and there's no question about that. But overall, I'm supportive of this plan, and I look forward to seeing it proceed. And councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of that, what the mayor just said. I wanted to point out to council's attention on page, let's see here, page seventeen of the staff report on the site plan itself. Unless this, Ms. Bauer, you can zoom in on the site plan for us, but we don't get the highest res distributions, so I've lost the page. If you zoom in a little bit, the parking stalls there, if you zoom in on one of the parking stalls that's on there. Yeah, if you zoom in on page, the page that we're given, there seems to be an indication of the stall width itself, plus another separation from the bike lane to accommodate the door swing of a vehicle. And I don't know how we can show that to council, rather than...
I think that's what Mr. Seffy explained.
As I was getting at earlier, so I'd like to highlight that again. And, you know, I certainly echo the desire to improve, improved cycling separation from vehicle traffic and parked vehicles up against sidewalks, but not on one development. We see this comment come back a lot, that we need to change that structurally in the bylaws. And, you know, I must have, must have missed it coming forward on some of the other developments in Willoughby. So I would like to, you know, approve this, get, call the question, and, and get to the point where we, you know, as a council, start to look at improving cycling separation townshipwide, not just on one development. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call a question on H1. And it carries unanimously. Okay, move on to H2, and this is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100171, development permit application number 101022. And this is on Forty-Eighth Avenue, 22300 block, bylaw number 5547, 5548, and 5549. Could I have a motion, please?
No move.
Councillor Davis, Secretary, councillor Kuntz, discussion on H2. Seeing none, I'll call a question. It carries, councillor Richter and councillor Arneson are opposed. And now we go to the mayor and council report. So good evening, everyone. So welcome here. Good to see a good crowd. And again, welcome to the nurses, the student nurses, for, for being in attendance. So far, so good. Do you like it? Yeah? Man, good for you. There's, there's a role for you in local government one day. There's a few events to tell you about, which took place over the last couple of weeks. As a member of TransLink's mayor's council on regional transportation, I participated in a roundtable and tour with infrastructure minister Catherine McKenna on Wednesday, February the twelfth, where she came out, toured our skytrain. We rode out to look at some electric, electric buses, which she's really interested in. And I think TransLink is one of the leaders in the country on electrification of her fleet. I also provided remarks for Metro 2050, planning now and for future generations, which was part of a four-part Future of the Region Dialogue series, and that was held in North Vancouver. On Friday, February the fourteenth, was the groundbreaking ceremony for Trinity Western University's Robert G. Coon Building, which will house the School of Business and TW Global. It'll be a new landmark for TW. It's wonderful to see the university continue to grow and thrive. And I'm sure councillor Whitmarsh, you will get your tents courts back at some future date. On Thursday, February twentieth, I visited the Langley Animal Protection Society, which is benefiting from funds raised during the National Cupcake Day, which is today, and I had an excellent cupcake. It was a beer bacon cupcake. It was awesome, piece of bacon in it. Yeah, it was awesome. Metro Vancouver's Council of Councils was held on Saturday, February the twenty-second, and I attended along with councillors Arneson, Ferguson, Kuntz, Long, Richter, Whitmarsh, and Woodward. Items on the agenda included an update from the Metro Vancouver Regional Growth Strategy and Housing Ten-Year Plan, and a regional industrial land strategy. And these Council of Councils are held three times a year to bring all the councils in Metro Vancouver together for updates on some of the initiatives. The council was also busy. On Tuesday, February eleventh, acting mayor Ferguson took part in the Taiwan Pavilion Opening Ceremony as part of Globe 2020 in Vancouver, and was on hand later that evening when the Langley Elk's Lodge welcomed the grand exalted ruler for Canada. And you have your elk with you, I see, councillor Ferguson? Yeah, good. Sitting up there, your mascot. On February eighteenth, he attended the signing of the Belkara Regional Park Cooperation Agreement between the Slatelituth Nation and Metro Vancouver. He attended the Small Business Species Awards Gala on February, February twenty, February twenty-first, and the annual MESS dinner at the Royal Westminster Regiment on Saturday, February twenty-second. Councillor Arneson took part in the Fraser Valley Regional Library's Board Development on February the nineteenth and twentieth. On Saturday, February twenty-second, she brought greetings to those taking part in the coldest night of the year walk put on by the Salvation Army's Gateway of Hope, and attended the Langley Rod and Gun Club's Award Evening. Now councillor Arneson, was it the coldest night of the year, or was it okay?
It was actually balmy.
Balmy. And councillor Kuntz attended the seminar and dinner at Trinity Western University in celebration of Dr. Rick Sawatsky's Canada Research Chair renewal on Thursday, February the thirteenth, and took part in the historic Merivale Bus Tour on Tuesday, February the eighteenth as part of- and took part in the Historic Memorial Bus Tour on Tuesday, February 18th, as part of the Township's Heritage Week celebrations. On Tuesday, February 18th, Counsel Long attended a reception for the announcement of Jazz in the Vine, a new music and wine event series from the folks who put on the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival. The Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce held its monthly dinner meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, and Councillors Arneson, Kuntz, Richter, and Whitmarsh attended, and Councillors Arneson, Richter, and Woodward attended the Denny Ross Memorial Park Open House held on Thursday, February 22nd. That was my report, and if there's anything to add, Counsel Ferguson.
Oh, I did want to say, yes, I did bring for the, the idea of going to the Elks event was the President for all of Canada was there, and he provided me President Derek, and that was slow in the picture as well, so I've got this, so anybody sees this, you'll know why that's here for the Elks. You know, the interesting thing is that on the regional district parks, Salawitut Signature between, that's the Chair, it's Abdul, you all signed with the park staff, and it's the little tooth nation, that is an important thing, because you see an awful lot in the news on a daily basis with people protesting and other, this is a very, very positive thing, and Metro Vancouver has gone a long way for Indigenous relations and finding partnerships, and we're well-respected in that part. I know I sit on the Indigenous Committee for Metro Vancouver, I've done Treaty Nation for the Ktaytse Nation, and there's a lot of positive things happening. I did want to point that out, Mr. Mayor, it was a very positive step for Metro Vancouver.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to other business, and so there are some notices of motion, and I'm just going to throw this out to those members of council, put the notice of motion on, there's three of them, M1, M2, and M4, that are kind of the similar theme, and, you know, I have no problem with them coming on the floor, but I was wondering if the movers, or those who put that together and put them all to, or one at a time, off to Council Process Committee, because I think this is important, that we all have a really good discussion on this, you know, going through the budget and certainly discussing our long-term debt policies. But I'll leave that up to the movers, that's just my comments, so I'm going to put on Counsel Richter first. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, to follow up with your comment about sending it to the CPC, could we get it to the CPC for the next meeting, or within, or within the next two meetings?
Yeah, I was chatting with Ms. Bauer and Mr. Backen today about this, so what, I know we are putting, we're talking about having a meeting, and we'll be discussing that too, on March the 2nd, was it? And is that the appropriate meeting to bring this to it? Bring this to?
Your Worship, you've said it very well, we're anticipating the need to increase the number of meetings. The thought process, they would be in the, I guess, the Monday in the middle of our regular meetings, in the month of March, that doesn't work very well because of spring break, so our thought process was we could begin on March the 2nd. To accelerate these to March the 2nd might be a little bit quick, we thought instead that March the 2nd, if council's available, and that's really the point of the discussion, would probably be the best day to try to do a bit of a catch-up that's, by what's there. If, however, March the 2nd is not available for council, we'd proceed then to start this in April, and could make these a priority for April.
So April would be the, okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with doing that. So I will move the motion and refer it to CPC.
Sure, yeah, you can move M1 and M2.
And move M1 and M2 and refer them to the April CPC meeting.
Okay, so it's moved by Counsel Richter, seconded by Counsel Kuntz. Discussion on that, so I'm going to call the question, so moving both M1 and M2. So M1. Okay, that carries, Counsel Long opposed. So now, we're taking care of those two, and Counsel Arneson, I'll put you on, and you've, Counsel Arneson, here we are, okay, you're on.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I'm just wondering, for the sake of expediency, if you might like to alter the agenda, just so we can deal with M4 at the same time as having?
Sure, if there's no objection, we'll just go ahead with M4 then, take M4 first.
Yes, thank you. Well, I agree that it is in the same ballpark and, excuse me, overlapping with the conversation about long-term debt policy and our budget process, so I would be willing to also advance that to our next meeting that is adjourned.
So you move M4 to be referred to the?
That's correct.
Same Council Process Committee.
Yes.
Third Secondor, Counsel Kuntz seconds. Discussion on that, I'll call the question on M4. It carries, Counsel Long opposed. So M3, Counsel Arneson.
Thank you, Worship. I'm just going to read this in its entirety, so it is a motion about establishing right-of-ways for critical roadway linkages in Willoughby. Whereas the widening of 208 Street has been a council-led priority, resulting in lengthy discussions and debate to date regarding the completion of critical roadway infrastructure in and around 208 Street, and now considering roadway linkages necessary to enhance livability, safety, connectivity, and other desirable outcomes for the fast-growing Willoughby community, whereas the WarCap mechanism has been developed to advance the completion of roadway infrastructure in the area, but the potential outcome is that council may have to commit to borrowing to fund some of the necessary land acquisitions in order for the roadway infrastructure to be constructed in a timely and expeditious fashion, and whereas it is prudent and advisable to seek policies that would augment and enhance the WarCap strategy in order to achieve any potential cost reductions by limiting the cost of the associated land acquisitions, which are currently a financial impediment to undertaking the works, therefore, be it resolved, the council directs staff to undertake the following. Number one, commence discussions as soon as practically possible with owners of properties fronting key sections of arterial road network as identified in the staff report of 9113 dated July 8th, 2019, with the view to acquire at little or no cost to the township the areas as dedication or through a statutory right-of-way as necessary to complete the road widening as required pursuant to municipal standards based on maintaining the overall gross development densities as part of future development of the lands. B, prepare a plan following the above-referenced discussions with fronting property owners in order to complete key sections of the arterial roadwork to, one, ultimate standards within the widened road allowances if the discussions lead to the required dedication or granting of a statutory right-of-way at little or no cost to the township, or, two, interim standards within the existing available road allowance if the discussions do not lead to the required dedication or establishment of a statutory right-of-way at little or no cost to the township, and, C, prepare a cost estimate based on an overall plan that would achieve completion of an updated arterial road network in the referenced area for inclusion as part of the capital budget process to be accompanied by a substantive staff report and presentation to council.
Third Secondor. Seconded by Counsel Richter, discussion. Counsel Woodward.
Did you want to speak first? Counsel Arneson, it is your.
Yeah. Well, thank you, thank you, Worship, and thank you, council. I've spoken at length about this, although I'm not sure that necessarily I can do this justice in a short amount of time, but what I would like to establish by bringing this forward for council consideration is that during the rather lengthy discussions regarding a number of initiatives, including WarCap, which I have included in this motion, the idea is that above all, it seeks to create a situation in which as much of the land inventory that would be required for a roadway allowance is given over to the township in order to reduce cost. So more than anything, this is a cost-saving measure. In addition, just to the verbiage that you've just heard, I have done considerable consultation informally with staff, also with UDI, and as well as other developers over the last very number of months, and I've come to the conclusion that this is a low-cost and sort of low-tech measure in order to advance the principles of attempting to create enough of a roadway infrastructure system so as to defray some of the other inevitable costs, because not living in an ideal world, I understand that we are not going to get all of the frontages using this process or likely any other, but the idea is that we would be able to put together a strategy that, as I said, would reduce the cost overall. So having pre-vetted it with others, I feel that it is an important motion for council to consider, and I look forward to some discussion on this topic.
Thank you. And by others, you meant staff?
Sorry.
By others, did you mean staff?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Counsel Woodward.
Okay, so I'm going to try to be helpful. I had a couple of questions through to staff, though, on this, to Mr. Backen or Mr. Seffy. Mr. Seffy, in some of our discussions leading up to your presentation and other consultations with you regarding the WarCap drafts, wasn't the pursuit of statutory right-of-ways at no cost to the township, was that something that we would have been doing within WarCap anyway?
Seffy?
That's correct, your worship, yes.
Okay, so when possible, within the WarCap proposal, we would pursue, with property services, we would pursue a statutory right-of-way at no cost, obviously as a preference to purchasing land or expropriation?
That's correct.
Okay, and so what would we do in regards to this plan or this proposal for statutory right-of-ways where a house exists within the real estate necessary for widening of the road?
Well, your worship, under a scenario such as the one described by Counsel Woodward, I think it would be part of the negotiations to address, I guess, the needs of the landowner if, in fact, the building was being used for occupation of the owner in one way or another, by, I guess, mitigating the impact of the road somehow, if the building can be relocated, or if the building can be constructed, or some other way. In other words, it will likely not be at no cost, there will be some cost, but it's difficult to sort of put a number, quantify it at this point.
And so it'd be safe to say, though, that currently, without WarCap, even with this particular initiative, we would have no mechanism for funding that outside of finding capital contributions or property tax increases, some other mechanism separate from what WarCap proposed? We would not have that funding source for that one or two properties we would need to move forward with this particular proposal?
That's right.
Right. Number C, prepare a cost estimate based upon the overall plan. Wasn't there not cost estimates already presented as part of some of the staff reports on the WarCap proposal?
There was a cost estimate, but I gather from the motion that council is considering at this point, the intent would be to do the, I guess, the next step of validating the estimate better in terms of, I guess, having some discussions to provide a higher degree of certainty and accuracy to the estimate.
And so in some cases, if we have to fill in the gaps by using a property tax or non-development-based revenue source, we'd have to borrow the money for that, there would be an interest cost associated with that, and in some cases, the cost of construction of the road may exceed the DCC's revenue from the density of that parcel, we would have no way within this particular proposal to make up those funds?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. So number B2, interim standards within the existing available roads allowance, maybe I could ask the mover or Mr. Seffy what that means? I'm not sure what an interim standard within the existing road allowance would mean, other than maintaining the existing unacceptable road. I'm not sure what interim standards within the existing available road allowance would mean. Do you, Mr. Seffy?
Thank you again, your worship. I'm not sure if Counsel Arneson would like to address that, but I'll take a stab. There are some cases where widening may be possible without the acquisition of additional private property, in terms of not meeting the ultimate design of a road cross-section, but rather something that addresses the need for, I guess, widening in some way that is not, again, ultimate, but rather interim condition. So for example, it could be something that does not involve a sidewalk, perhaps, to the same standard that we typically require as part of a development process, that being one and a half meter concrete sidewalk with curb and gutter, so we could see a scenario where a one and a half meter asphalt sidewalk with an extruded curb might fit within the existing right-of-way without the necessary boulevard or the utility corridor that would address the need for the traveling portion, the vehicular portion of the road.
Okay, I think that answers the question, that we would have, so rather than what we have right now, which is a, to many, including myself, in many cases, on some of these arterial roads where, you know, 35,000 people live, the roads are unacceptable, we would then build a slightly less, slightly more acceptable road, and then eventually build the real road? Would that be the idea of an interim standard?
Well, again, it would be something that could work in terms of widening, not to the ultimate standard with full streetlights, curb and gutters, sidewalks, et cetera, at the same time providing additional road capacity for vehicular purposes.
All right, I think I'll leave it there. I think for me, the, I certainly want to see other members of council highlighting this as an issue, so I appreciate the intent of the motion to try to find other mechanisms to explore, but I think in the end, the proposal that I've made so far in that road, arterial road completion amenity policy program finds that right proceed process to build some of this infrastructure and advance the development, or at least have the funding source available to finish gaps in the road, should certain small parcels not develop eventually. Without proceeding with that program, there really is no full solution, and this one seems to be essentially doing what WarCap is already proposing to do within some of my discussions with staff that maybe some weren't aware of, so I certainly appreciate the intent, but the real solution is to proceed with WarCap. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, it seems to me that this is a policy matter, and in accordance with our new framework of referring policy matters to CPC for a more robust discussion period, I would like to move referral of this to CPC.
Moved by Counsel Richter and seconded by Counsel Arneson on referral to CPC to have a little more discussion. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can give the same speeches at the CPC meeting, I suppose, and ask the same questions of staff, so I don't see the point of referring this. Thank you.
Counsel Ferguson.
We, I certainly respect the fact that we're talking about a road and road networks around the Willoughby area that definitely need to be addressed. I think that many of us have discussed, went through the WarCap, and members of council that brought it forward, and it came back and forth, we had more discussions, there was an awful lot more legwork done, there was a presentation done, and more legwork done by all members of council. I think it's important to note that we don't want duplication, we don't want staff running around with time and money to go over something. Certainly, private property rights always come into play, talking to people in the development community, the UDI, and some of the comments that come on a regular basis, as many of us already know, they would love to forelane 208, but some fictitious names, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Jones, haven't given leeway to the council, to, or staff, or zoning requirements are moved forward with an application they already have in place and have not proceeded, much to the judgment of both UDI development community and otherwise, we hear that all the time, certainly interim measures that we can do. I'm just not sure we're here at this point in time, maybe if we get some more information or even a presentation with more documentation. This is a challenge that comes forward with notice of motions, and I've been a victim of as well, where, you know, I, myself, and others present things that need a little bit more detail, and so just coming as a notice of motion becomes a challenge. So as much as I like that, I'm prepared to follow through with what we already have with WarCap and see what comes about if we need to make some changes. Thank you.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, you know, I think this, the whole idea of the motion really presupposes or thinks about what, having WarCap already approved, and currently, WarCap is not in place. We are discussing it, we're waiting for our staff to bring a report on what WarCap would look like, and we have to then choose to whether we adopt it or not. I think this is premature. is premature. And so rather than a referral, which I won't support, I actually think it should be deferred until we either choose to adopt or not adopt the WarCap.
Thank you. All right, on the referral, I'll call a question. Number three. Okay, the referral is defeated. Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Kuntz, Mayor Fowles, Counselor Long, and Counselor Woodward opposed. Back to the main motion. There's a speakers list. Counselor Whitmarsh?
I'd like to make a deferral motion to defer this conversation until after WarCap is either adopted or not adopted.
Is there a secondor to the deferral?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kuntz. Okay, I'll just hit the amendment if you want to speak. Counselor Woodward, there you go.
Yeah, so I think the deferral for WarCap, I don't understand the logic of it. I think I've outlined pretty thoroughly that a lot of what's in this motion is already contained within WarCap with the discussions with staff. I certainly don't think we're going to have property services run around and talk to 100-plus property owners, as contemplated in the motion as well, and other things. So I think we are having these discussions within the process that's occurring with WarCap, which at this point looks like 4.5 or 5.4. So I don't see the need to have two competing motions around the same concept, which is what's occurring here. Thanks. So I don't support the deferral.
Thank you. I see no further discussion. We'll call a question on the deferral. Has defeated. Counselor Ferguson, Mayor Fowles, Counselor Long, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Woodward, Counselor Davis opposed. So we're back to the main motion. Counselor Ferguson on the main motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Counselor Woodward on the main motion?
No, good, thanks.
Call a question on the main motion. Main motion is defeated. Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Kuntz, Mayor Fowles, Counselor Long, Counselor Woodward opposed. Okay, so other business. I do have one piece. I just want to ask staff if they can respond to Mrs. Sinrich. He did have several questions, which is hard for us to answer on the fly, but if perhaps he could respond to Mrs. Sinrich with answers to his questions that he had. Thank you. Okay, is there any other business? Seeing none, motion terminated?
Worship, there was one small task, which was March the 2nd. We haven't had a chance to see if council's available on that for a CPC meeting. It's a bit quick, but that would allow us to try to clear some of the backlog.
Can staff, I mean, if anybody's already opposed right now, but if staff can reach out on the council calendar for March the 2nd, unless I hear otherwise, we could maybe go ahead with CPC on March 2nd. Don't see anybody shaking their heads, so...
Oh, we need, thank you.
And that's... Yeah, I believe so. One o'clock start, yeah. We don't need a motion for that? Do you need a motion? No? Okay, great. So, okay, so we had a motion terminated by Counselor Davis, secondor, was Counselor Whitmarsh. All those in favor, those carried. Well, I'll take a moment, and then we'll go into the public hearing.